Council members, members of the public, all the wonderful staff, great to see you. As usual, and again, members of the public, thank you so much for being here. Would you call the roll, please, Erica?
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Here.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here, and we stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, I want to thank Steve, and I know Doug, you've pinch-hit for me as well. Thank you, you guys did a great job, and thank you for allowing me to spend a little extra time with the family this time of the year. I appreciate it very much.
It's a pleasure and an honor, and I'd like to let you know if we could, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the Vice Mayor.
That was next on the agenda. Motion in a second to excuse Vice Mayor Bright Cruz, if his family having a good time on vacation, well deserved. I'll just ask for all in favor.
Aye.
I know that there isn't anybody opposed. Okay, pass unanimously.
The records got to show that it was a roll call vote.
We do?
At everyone, yeah.
Yes.
I've been away a little while.
You changed it for committees, but not for the committee.
That means unanimous, everybody said yes, we excuse them. Go ahead, Erica, call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Damn attorneys.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. Okay, before we get started, our state representative, Rick Stark, is here, a dear friend of the town of Southwest Ranches, and is always there when we need him, and was a wonderful host when we were up in Tallahassee, going to tell us all about the great things potentially happening in Tallahassee, and all the good things that are going on here, and I guess some, something about the healthcare reform and the status of that program. So Representative Stark, it's a pleasure, thank you for being here.
Thank you, council members, it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. I did have one announcement, and then just, you know, to speak a little bit about the Affordable Care Act, and how it impacts us here in the district. But the announcement that I had is that there is going to be, beginning, I believe, next month, a, what we call, this is the, it's called the Flowmobile, which is the Florida License on Wheels, going to be at the, here at Town Hall, where, once a month, if residents would like to do anything that they would normally do with the Division of Licensing, registration, getting a new license, whatever, instead of standing online somewhere else, you'll be able to do that here. And so, you know, and this is going to be, this is to be the only town in the area that's going to have it, and I think it's a great service, and I'm glad the town of Southwest Ranches liked the idea, and myself and my staff, we were able to convince the Division of Licensing to do this, so I think this is going to be a nice, nice thing to have. My office is getting lots of calls regarding the Affordable Care Act. Now, let me just give you a brief overview, and I'm going to try to talk about 2,000 pages of federal legislation in, like, less than 10 minutes. But if you've ever heard the term Obamacare, this refers to the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, and this was passed in March of 2010. Now, I'm not here to judge 2,000 pages of legislation, but it affects every single citizen within the United States. And there are parts of the law that affect us federally, parts of the law that affect us on a statewide basis. So I'm just going to give you just a quick overview. Now, one of the things that prompted me to get into going and talking to town councils, and to be having speaking engagements, is that we've actually received calls, "Do I get Obamacare on January the 1st?" And the answer is technically yes, but people don't understand exactly what this means. So here's just a broad overview of the Affordable Care Act. Now, in Tallahassee, one of the committees that I served on was a select committee, which means it's an ad hoc committee, doesn't meet all the time, but was put together strategically to talk about the Affordable Care Act, how it affects the state of Florida, because even though it's a federal law, there are certain things that the state has to implement. So just to begin with, since March of 2010, parts of the Affordable Care Act have been going to affect little by little, like every few months, there's a new regulation. But the major focus of the Affordable Care Act actually starts January of 2014. Now, how does this affect us here locally? On October 1st, what's called a enrollment period begins. So here's, here's the major parts of the Affordable Care Act. Number one, as of January 2014, you want to get health insurance, you don't have to worry about pre-existing conditions, you want to apply for coverage, you get it. That's the most important portion of the Affordable Care Act that I actually like. I mean, that, you want to get the coverage, you get it. You don't have to worry about making an application, you get 50 medical questions, and then maybe you get it, maybe you get the climb, maybe certain things are not covered. So that goes away as of January the 14th, and you can begin applying for these type of plans as of October 1st, and that's what I mean by an enrollment period, and that's going to go through March 31st. Now, the only thing I'm not crazy about is that Medicare's open enrollment begins October also, so going to be a very busy country with, with all this enrollment stuff going on. But everybody gets basic healthcare if they buy, you don't just automatically get this. So there's going to be three ways to get coverage. You either get it because you get a subsidy, or you're below the federal poverty level, or you're, you know, you're a Medicaid, or you get insurance through your employer, or you get a subsidy. So, you know, these are the different ways to get coverage. Now, if you fall between 100% and 400% of the federal poverty level, which is $17,500 on the downside, on the high side, it's about 40, just under $46,000, you get some form of subsidy. Now, they're not going to go crazy asking, they're just going to ask your income. Right now, when you call your insurance agent, you want a quote, you know, they get on and they ask you age, where you live, all sorts of things that come up with a rate. Now, the rating is going to be entirely different, no male and female, it's just going to be geographic location, they can rate up if you smoke, but it doesn't look like that's going to, you know, they're going to be doing that at the present time. And then they're going to ask you your income, and if your income is below $46,000 a year, they're going to plug it in, get a quote, and it's going to tell you what the most is that you can pay for your health insurance with that subsidy. Now, the question, and I think we talked about, small employers, where's Gary? We talked about large employers. If you are a small employer, you have 50 or less employees working for you, Affordable Care Act really does not affect you as far as having to provide your employees with coverage, only if you have 50-plus. And if you've read the newspapers over the last few weeks, that actually was delayed, it's now delayed till January of 2015, but for everybody, the types of health plans that you're going to get are different. They're going to be what they call medal brackets, gold, silver, bronze, platinum. And I know it sounds a little weird, but insurance companies are already weighing in on this, and they already know that, you know, there's already a lot of nuances, so, you know, there's still going to be a lot of different availabilities. And there's something called an online exchange. If you receive a federal subsidy, because your income is below $46,000, if you want to get that subsidy, you have to buy on these online portals that are being set up, and go live as of October 1st, which brings me into how we're affected by the decisions of the state of Florida. Now, when I served on the Affordable Care Act Committee, we had several different things that we voted on. One of the things that we voted on was whether or not Florida would have their own marketplace. States have the ability to either have their own marketplace, or they default, and the federal government runs the, this online exchange. Well, the House of Representatives and the Senate voted that they didn't want to take any federal dollars, that they would default, and there's going to be a federal portal, a website, set up as of October 1st. We expect it to go live, but Florida's not involved in it, the federal government runs it. Now, Florida is able to, you know, tell, you know, to license insurance companies to, to write here, but they're not managing this website. So that was one of the things. Now, I happen to have voted in favor of having this online web portal, because I wanted it controlled by the state of Florida, I didn't want it controlled by the federal government. But the state wants to take a look-see, see how it operates, and if it's something that we're, you know, we're going to get, you know, involved in probably within the next two years. But one of the things that you really do hear a lot about on the news, and this does affect us in a business standpoint, part of the Affordable Care Act calls for each state to get a subsidy to increase what we call Medicaid funding. Right now, Medicaid is for people up to 100% of the federal poverty level, and the Affordable Care Act called for people up to 138% of the federal poverty level to get subsidized health insurance at no cost to them. But when the Affordable Care Act challenged in the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court said that states had the option on their own as to whether or not they wanted to expand health insurance to this extra 38% of the people. But the Affordable Care Act already had the funding mechanism in there. So when I was in Tallahassee, we had heated debates over whether or not we would accept $51 billion in funding over the next 10 years. Now, Medicaid is a program that is a state and federal partnership. The dollars that go into Medicaid, usually it's about 60% federal and 40% by the state. With this portion of the Affordable Care Act, for the first three years, the federal government is to pay for it entirely on their own, the state doesn't chip in at all, and then for the next seven years, it's a sliding scale until states have to, you know, pay about 10%. But very conservative groups were actually in favor of this program, the Florida Chamber of Commerce, Associated Industries of Florida, and the Florida Hospital Association, because it's a big injection of dollars into the Florida economy, and even if you don't like, you know, putting the country more in debt, what happens to this money, we don't take it, it goes somewhere else. And I don't want somebody in Ohio thanking a resident in Florida for, for having the money come here. And so, you know, so I was part of a group that voted in favor of this, we had heated debates, the Florida House of Representatives voted, "We don't want this," so it didn't happen. And I am part of a group that has asked the governor to have a special session, we probably have, probably until around January to make that decision. So, I mean, this is basically what's, what's going on with this, and I really would not like to, I mean, this affects the entire Florida economy, and one of the things you do have to consider when it comes to health insurance, I mean, I have a term, it's called tinselful, that there is no such thing as a free lunch. However, we do have inherent problems within the healthcare delivery system, that people who cannot afford healthcare, they show up at the emergency rooms, we do have laws on the books, that if people show up, you got to give them care. And these people go when they are the sickest, they are using the most expensive type of medicine, and the Affordable Care Act, if these people were covered, they get primary care, it's going to cost more going in, but as people are getting care, you're going to see less of these people showing up in the emergency rooms, you know, they'll show up in clinics and all sorts of things. So, you know, there's, so there is, there really is some very good strength and very good arguments, you know, for the state really to, you know, to be accepting these dollars. And the Florida Senate actually voted in favor of it, they had a compromise bill where we would not use the Medicaid program, but we would actually take federal dollars into a very fiscally-run program, and actually give people money into like a health savings account, let them just go buy regular coverage, because Medicaid coverage is really, you know, it's hard to get doctors to go on the program, doctors don't get paid very well, so we figured that this was a much better program. But unfortunately, this did not pass. But this just gives you a general idea of the kinds of things that we were, I mean, there's a lot of things that went on in this legislation people are not aware of, you know, we did have a, you know, we do have a ban on texting while driving now, you know, we did, we did something where, you know, foster kids are now, you know, on the state dole up to age 21, which really makes it a lot easier for our, you know, juveniles that don't have, you know, parents, or, you know, I mean, so there are a lot of good things that come out of this session, but this was one of the things that, you know, was not one of my, you know, favorites, I really do, you know, and we do have so many questions about the Affordable Care Act. Now, I will tell you, I do have Sheila back there, who's, if you could stand up, who is with me, Sheila Clark, goes up to Tallahassee with me, and she's the one that, before I go into session, comes with a binder that's about this size, with 80 bills for me to take a look at, and, you know, this is one of the tougher parts, looking at all these pieces of legislation, trying to figure, you know, you're going to vote up or down, and how it's going to affect us. But this is, you know, this is staff that, you know, that keeps us up to date what's going on there. And I do want to say before I, before I finish here, I want to thank you again for coming and visiting in Tallahassee, I really enjoyed being able to spend the time with you, and I hope you guys can come up again next year. So I will just throw out my number real quickly, for people to please call the office if you have a question on anything regarding anything, but of course, especially on this, healthcare.org, go on the internet, healthcare.org, if you have questions about the Affordable Care Act. This is going to be one of the online portals for people just to get information on the Affordable Care Act, but it's not the online portal to buy. But then again, Rick Stark, 954-217-0287, and I greatly appreciate calls, feedback, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm up there serving you, so I really would like you to give me a call and let me know what's going on. Thank you very much for allowing this.
Rick, always a pleasure, and thank you for taking the time, excuse me, to be here, and for the outstanding job of the commitment that you always seem to, to commit to, and that's taking care of us and the people that you represent, we're very fortunate to have you. Thank you again, it's good to see you. Okay, public, item number four, public comment.
All speakers are limited to three minutes, public comment will last for 30 minutes, all comments must be on non-agenda items, all speakers must fill out a request card prior to speaking, all speakers must state first name, last name, and mailing address, speakers will be called in the order the request cards were received. Request cards will only be received until the first five minutes of public comment have concluded.
We have three speakers tonight, Newell Hollingsworth, Vince Valetta, and Manny Hagan, in that order. We now have a fourth and final speaker.
(laughing) Thank you. Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Just some miscellaneous stuff tonight. I took a look at the website homepage, which has changed somewhat, and the chicken is gone, the rooster on the upper left-hand corner. And also, the little weather vane is gone, that sat there and spun, because we have no idea which way north is in our town. So those, I think, are important items, minutia, but important, and they do put a symbol on our town, and I'd like to see them back on the website, and as other things come back. I spoke with our clerk, and because I asked why the agenda was not on the website, and they said IT problems. Well, let's hope that IT finally gets it right sooner or later, and the city folks can go home. Now, as to some good news, I spoke to Town Hall yesterday, about 3 o'clock, and said that, congratulations, bulk has been picked up, garbage has been picked up, and recycling has been picked up. That's almost a first for this year. So it appears that things are happening, and it looks like since we're so far west on 199th, and they only have to go to 210, that at 3 o'clock, I suspect that the entire town was picked up on time, and they did not take their pound of dirt with them when they, and did not leave anything in the road. So I'm sure it did happen around town in some places, but it is an improvement on 199th at least, in 202 and 205, because those are the only three streets that I took a look at. So I'd like to congratulate the administration and staff as to putting the thumb screws down, but don't release the tension. Thank you.
Vince Valetta?
Vince Valetta, P.O. Box 291507, Davie, Florida. Mayor, councilman, first, it's good to see you back, mayor, in your position, upright, and what I have to say tonight is, has to do with newer people, newer residents in our town. It's unfortunate that they're not aware that we are a water retention area. In other words, your property has to retain the water that falls on it. Some of the newer residents are not aware of this, because we have an incident where the person, and I'm not going to mention names or locations, where the person got a pump and started to pump water off their property, and pumped it in such a manner that he pumped it into the canal, but it washed away half, half of the bank into the canal, which in turn restricts the flow of water in the canal. So this, I'm sure they didn't think of it as offending their neighbors, but it is. And the water that falls on your property is to remain there, and the way it's disposed of is by, through groundwater, meaning that when the canals go down, the water goes through the ground and into the canal. It's not permissible to pump your property either on somebody else's property or in the canal. And I, I'm sure they weren't aware of it, but it's something that has to be brought to their attention, the newer residents of Southwest Ranches. And I'd like to thank Representative Stark for his dissertation on Affordable Care Act, but he forgot to mention the old people. It does affect Medicare, Medicare, but in a different way. And I'm sure he'll bring a delight to the older folks. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Manny Hagan?
Manny Hagan, 17901, Southwest 68th Court, also Manor Lane. I would just like to thank everyone who showed up at our 4th of July party. It was a great thing for Southwest Ranches, and I'm hoping that we're going to have a lot more out there. One day, maybe the barn will be finished, and then we'll really have a nice time. Thank you all.
Dee Schroder?
Dee Schroder, 5501, Thrive Road Lane. I'm really grateful for every single one of yous allowing those doors to be open and let us come in and do our complaining.[1414.25][1414.25](laughing) It's just great. I have one complaint, I've already spoke to a couple of my councilmember about it, but when you turn, when you turn east off of Hancock onto Griffin Road, there's a light there that flashes. It's for the schools, but what they fail to realize is that on Saturday and Sunday, there is no school. At 7 o'clock at night, there is no school, and it just flashes. And I think it's a speed trap, I really do. I think everybody slows down and hits the brakes, and then I got to drive like an idiot and go around all these people, because I say there is no school in session, this is a faulty light. So I would like my town administrator to find out if this is the school, the road, the county, it doesn't matter who, but just so it gets fixed, because I know I'm going to get a ticket one day, somebody's going to say, "Look at that crazy person dodging all those people." Thank you.
Kay? Trayble?
Yes, they just weren't watching me, sneaky. I got a phone call right after the last meeting, and it was in regard to that somebody had heard that we were against the trail riders participating in the park, the fishing hole. And I talked to them at great length, told them, reassured them that no, nobody, to the best of my knowledge, was against the trail riders. In fact, all, anybody that wants to get out there and work is gladly received. The only thing is that there might be some disputes about whether or not the trails can be open or closed, and that would have to go through legal, because it wouldn't be necessarily that the trail riders are comfortable with it, but when you open up that park, it's not specific for just the trail riders. It would be anybody on a horse that wants to ride those trails, and we would be assuming the responsibility if we did open them up and say, "Okay, everybody can use them." And I will tell you that mommy up the street with little Suzie on her horse will send her up there, and if she gets hurt, we will probably be sued, because we said that the trail was safe, and for her to be able to utilize the trail. That was purely my conversation, my opinion, when I discussed this with them. I think that a lot of people out there really don't understand what's going on, and so when they see a group show up, they immediately think that maybe that group is trying to take over, or, and that's really the basis of the conversation, was that somebody had made a rumor that the trail riders were trying to take over the fishing hole park. And so I reassured her that, as far as I knew, it didn't come from anywhere, not the Parks Board, not the council, that it might have been just people seeing them out there and making conversation. So, you know, rest assured, we appreciate all the help we can get, especially free. And my only concern is that once you say it's usable, it's usable for everybody, and there are people out there that will send their child over there and think that it's perfectly safe, and it may or may not be. Thank you.
Last speaker, Bob Hartman.
Over the last two weeks out where I live, we've had 17 inches of rain. It's been amazing. I took a ride around the areas that typically flood, and the next day there wasn't any water. My own property, which used to stay flooded most of the summer, is pretty much draining in about a day or so. I have no standing water other than in my pond, and that's where it belongs. It's worked out really well, so I'm glad I live on the west side of town, because things seem to be happening properly. I didn't see anybody pumping out their yard. That's number one. Number two, how many of y'all go out to Holiday Park? Okay, frequently, lately? Okay.
Parking lot was flooded halfway.
That's a different story. That's the Everglade, that's on the other side of the levee, that should flood. But anyway, you're probably all aware that the county's putting significant money into, to the park. You're probably also aware that, that the county took it back from Fish and Wildlife Commission, and now they're getting real money from the bridges, and where the bridges haven't put any money into the property probably in the 30 years they ran it, now they have to put a million bucks into it, which means there's some skin in the game finally from those folks. But I read just the other day that I think the county's putting another 18 million, they've only put a million and a half into it, look at the difference it's made. They're going to put a 14-mile hiking trail out there. I think this is all wonderful stuff. There's only one problem, every time you look at Holiday Park, it says Fort Lauderdale in the address. Everybody, everything associated with Holiday Park is Fort Lauderdale. It's in Southwest Ranches. Is there any way you guys can push that it's listed in Southwest Ranches? That, you know, their mailing address is Southwest Ranches, that they're advertised as Southwest Ranches, because it's becoming a gem right in our backyard, it's part of our town, we might as well get a little recognition. We get all kinds of other recognition, but this is great recognition, and it's absolutely beautiful. I go out there every other weekend at least to take pictures, or, or just have some fun out there. So I... So I'd encourage you to contact whomever at the county and make sure that they update where it's located. It's not in Fort Lauderdale. That's fifteen miles that way. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kath.
Kathy Cox, forty-nine, forty-nine forty, Thoroughbred Lane. I just want to point something out to the council based on Gay's comment. The state of Florida has a zero equine liability law, which you should be aware of. And it says if you are participating in any kind of equine activity, you are responsible. And you can't go around suing people because you fall off your horse, or your horse steps in a hole, or you do something and you get hurt. And I think the town, all you need to do is post that on the park and make sure people are aware of that. All of us who own horses, post it on our property. If you own a boarding barn or any of that kind of stuff, it needs to be on your fence or in your barn. And Davey, the rodeo arena, they post it at the rodeo arena also. So if Suzie goes down to the park and gets hurt because Mommy isn't there or because she falls off her horse, that's basically their responsibility. It's not yours. And so you need to be aware of that. I'm not saying that, you know, the town can't get sued. Town can get sued if a kid goes into a park on his bicycle and falls off. I mean, anybody can sue you for anything, and our town attorney knows that. But I'm just saying that from a, an equestrian perspective, that you need to make yourself aware of that law, and the town needs to post its property accordingly. Thank you.
Does that conclude the public speak? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. All right, item number five, board member comments. Any board members wish to speak or comment? I know you couldn't resist, Gay.
I know you can't answer me, so, but I know that we haven't had an update on the barn. And so I'm hoping that we're moving forward so that we can get that underway. And I, I was shooting for like October, November, but I can see that that's not going to happen. So maybe by the first of the year, or maybe like around Christmas, or we can have a New Year's party or something to celebrate it, and that would be nice. And we're going to have a board meeting. We didn't have one the last month, but we're going to have one this coming month. So, thank you.
You'll see, Gay, that there is some significant dollars in this budget to hopefully get close to completing that barn and have it ready for the meetings and, and additional community events. Okay. Item number five has concluded. Item number six, council member comments. Gary?
Hello, Doug. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming, as usual. I only have really one item I'd like to discuss right now, and I'd like to bring it up for council consideration, just strictly as a discussion point and a beginning in the thought process. And that is a year from this November, we have another election, and that is our opportunity to put referendums and things of that nature on the ballot. I would like everybody to consider, we have two studies being done right now. One is for the road resurfacing, which we nicknamed, actually Marty nicknamed it Tizor, based on what that comes out to, and we're looking at, you know, obviously millions of dollars to do this. It's a question of how we pay for it and how we do that, and I would like to see that on the ballot and let the residents decide that. And the other item is we're having a fire study, fire feasibility study involving the volunteer fire department and the current method that we're using. And if, depending on the results of that study, if it needs to be any large purchases, I'd like to see that go on a possible referendum. But that's all based on, predicated on what the study comes up with. And then the last thing, and there may be more later on as we go along, but just right now, is the Broward County Ethics Law, which can only be changed through referendum, which is really turned into not a good thing. And I think our, our law would be, that we had before that would be better, but it has to be changed by the voters in order to do that. And I'd like everybody to consider that now so we can start talking about it and then figure out the timeline, which Andy will probably work out, that we need to emphasize that. And Keith would be able to figure out the language, and we could submit all that to the supervisor elections and that sort of thing. So just, just think about it right now. It's obviously nothing, nothing other than a discussion point at this point. So anybody can think of that. And that's basically all I have right now.
Thanks, Gary. Go ahead, Freddie.
Unfortunately, I guess I'm going to be a while.
Your mic.
The first thing I'd like to talk about is the fishing hole park. And I'll have to apologize to the audience because you're probably not going to be able to follow us because you don't have a copy of the map, but I, I do. And I asked all the town administrator to tell the council people to bring their maps with them because I've got some apologizing to start with. I'll briefly bring you up to what happened at the last meeting. Before the last meeting, I got a copy of this print, which I'm looking at now, and I got it the morning before the meeting. And I took and got copies for everybody on the council because I tended to talk about it. I hadn't even looked at it when I did that. And when I got home and looked at it, and I'd seen some problems, I immediately got on telephone, and I knew that our engineer was in Naples at a meeting for three days. So I did, I did call him because I knew he had called me when he got out of the meeting. But I did call the Wilmington Bradley's office and talk to Vernon personally because he's had a lot to do with the map. But unfortunately, he was busy. He tried to help me, but he didn't have a copy of the map either. And every time I would talk to him about elevations, he really didn't know what I was talking about. So I took it on myself, I guess, and it was a mistake that I thought I was reading the print wrong, right, and I was reading it wrong. Because the last meeting, if you would remember, I just told you to look at some figures in there, and those little figures that you're looking at, that are without a circle or anything around them, is actually the elevation of the land before we started, which I didn't know. And I thought that was the finished elevation of the land. But when Willie got back Monday, Andy and I got him in a meeting in his office, and Willie explained the map to me. And unfortunately, like I was talking about, the playground being six something, that's not true. If you look at the map, in each four corners, it shows seven dot oh. That's the elevation of the, of the playground, not the six point five four that is showing in the middle. But, and if you look at some of the other places where I was worried about elevations being very low, that's not true. You have to go by the ones that are in a circle. Now, I can't, I, I know Willie and I know that Vernon were all aware of this, but I was not aware of it. And what I had suggested at the last meeting that we possibly wanted to bring the playground up to, to seven feet, that's where it is, seven feet. So I was wrong, and I apologize. I did make a visit to the park yesterday and talked to the gentleman that was sitting in a meeting, and I guess he was, you know, was under, didn't know what I was talking about either. But the only thing I can say is, nobody in the whole meeting recognized the mistake that I made, so everybody can't read a map as well as me either. So we're all at fault. But I apologize, and I'm hoping it don't happen again. And I'll tell you this, if you haven't got a chance, just don't go bothering them out there. But I took a quick visit out there yesterday, and it seems that he's, he's on the right track. He took and, he's working it on the, the horse trail on the north end of it right now, it looks like. And he cleared that area over on the west side, and I was really surprised to see how many the trees he was able to salvage in there. He did salvage a lot of trees, and December was one that went out there and tagged them, so they did. But he, he looks like he's going to be working with us. I apologized to him because he was, I guess he figured that I was crazy. I probably was. But anyway, it looks like it's on the track. It looks like we're heading in the right direction, and that's all I want to say about it. Anybody got any questions? They can, but I told Andy and I told Willie, and it's probably time, I'm kind of backing out of it a little bit. Sometimes you get in something, you can cause more trouble than you could. I'm here to help as much as I can, and I'll be overseeing it as much as I can, but I'm gonna let the experts take, to do most of it now. Okay, my second item is really the one that I need to talk more about, and that is a mowing contract. And I don't know how many of you people have been around town yesterday and today. I've seen more area mowed in the last two days than I've seen in six months. You know, so I think, Andy, I think we got through, we got, we got their attention. But what I found out, and I'm going to report it to you because I've already talked to December and I talked to Andy about it, when I, I had Marty give me six months of bills. I went through those bills back and forth, and I found out, and I can't say how many, but I can tell you this, I live on 166th Avenue. We put sod there in October. The first time that sod was mowed was last month when I mowed it. We charged, that gentleman charged us six months for mowing that, that time. It never got mowed. I, I've reviewed two bills where he charged us $400 to mow the frontier trails. It hasn't been done. But I tell you what, Andy has been working with me in December, and I think we found our problem, and I think we're on our way to correcting it. And I tell you the truth, I, this is the first time in three months I've seen him cut the, along the C-11. And he, they also cut some of it on Griffin Road, I mean Sterling Road. They come and cut my road. After I cut it, they come and cut it again. So I think, I think the gentleman has got, has got our attention, and I think Andy gave me something that he, he went over with the, the gentleman yesterday or the day before, and he'll cover it a little more than I did. But I think I did what I wanted to do. I just wanted the man to get out there and do what he's getting paid for, and I think he's doing that. And the last thing I, pardon?
Manny, if you don't, don't mind, just come on up to the speaker so we can get it recorded and get you on video.
Manny Hagan. I went out to Rolling Oaks Park today just to see how my Royal Poinsettias were doing because I've donated a few trees out there. I've got more to put into the ground as soon as we get somebody to dig some holes. So that's where we're at. But it is disgusting out there, and it is so high that you have to really step high, like you're marching or, or something, to get through that grass. And it hasn't been mowed. It wasn't mowed before our Fourth of July party. And so we have to, I mean, I know the, the people that are cutting our grass and whatnot have given us a very good deal, but that doesn't keep them from the obligation that they have to take care of it. And so I think that we should go after that. Thank you.
Well, what I can tell you, I'm looking at the, at the bills that I went through, and I scrutinized them, and what you're talking about, and I, I wish December was here so she could correct you if I'm wrong, but according to what it is, it's what we call, we calling that the southwest, let's see what we got here, Southwest Meadow Sanctuary. That's the Rolling Oaks Park. No, that's not it.
It's the Park.
The park attached to the barn.
Okay, well, then I, I don't know what he's referring to. I can look at the bills and see.
Where the barn's at.
Let me take and see what I have.
And then even when they mow the front part, they haven't touched the back part in six, seven months. And that's about twenty-five acres, which is about five and a half.
Yeah. I, I really don't want to get into that. I didn't really do that to bring out any individual places, and I don't think we need to. I think the trouble, trouble we needed, it looks like the problem was that the gentleman was supposed to give a schedule. He didn't give a schedule. He's going to give a schedule in the future. And I told December, "I'll help her checking those schedules if she doesn't have enough time," to make sure that he doesn't get away with what he, he was three months behind, giving her a lot of reports. So I, I think we got his attention, and I think it's going to work out. So I, I sort of say. The last thing I'd like to talk about is, I went to the South Broward Drainage meeting. I go there once a month, and I'm, I'm not too crowded. I'm the only one that's there in the audience, other than Bob Bush, and he has, there he is in the back. Did you, did you make it here? He's been having so much trouble with his vehicle, he has to walk. But it just so happened, at the meeting today, they had two public hearings. What they do, they start the meeting at nine o'clock, and then they have, at eight-thirty, they broke the meeting for a public hearing on the same thing that we had here last month was on this new code on what you have to do about public comments. And I got up and spoke on that a little bit, not much. Then the other thing was their budget. I'll take it back, I'm sorry. The first thing was about their facility report. And I did get up and talk about the facility report, and I, what I did, I got up there, and I thanked them for what they have done because what Bob Hartman just told you. I don't know how much, you know, but we, we're in good shape when it comes to water. All the roads that used to be on water, and they're down, and it's particularly because we're getting cooperation from next door. But you got, we got one gentleman on that board, Mr. Ryan. I don't know what he does, but he does not like Southwest Ranches. And at every time I get up and start talking, he gets on to Kevin about, "We're, he's doing too much for us. He's giving them too much money. They're such a little town, and they're getting this money. They're getting it back and forth." I heard it when I spoke on that, and I heard it when I talked on the public, on the budget. And the thing of it, I tell you that, everybody else on the board is on our side. Fortunately, he's the only one. I don't know, he has to had some bad dealings with us before, but it, he, he just doesn't like the town of Southwest Ranches. But they're going to help us, and we, and because they, they said they are here for drainage, and that's what they're here for. And so, but Bob and I go to those meetings, and I think it helps because at least we're there, you know, like whenever these hearings come up. I know it's tough if people get off work and do their, but we'll cover that for you. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Doug? Just one or two things. The project on the drainage on my street on 130th and 52nd is moving along diligently. Nice, big, large pipe. They've been directing traffic quite well, so it's moving along. They have one side partially done, so I'm guessing by the end of next week they should be done, would be a guess, but they have more time than that if need be. I'm only unhappy with one part of it, but I'm sure it will get resolved because I spoke to Willie this morning, and I spoke to Brian with Central Broward Drainage, who was out there. And I was under the impression that the head walls with the pipes we're extending to were going to go bank to bank. And apparently on the south side, I'm not sure about the north, it's not going bank to bank. It's eight or ten feet short. So I was worried about it washing out around that corner. So in talking to Brian, he mentioned about putting some, some of that riprap stacked there, I guess, to help set that. So if they do that, I think that will alleviate that problem. But I was a little disappointed that that head wall didn't go to the other bank entirely. It was short. Andy was actually out there this morning at about eight-thirty, and I met him out there, and we walked and showed him and talked about it briefly, and he wasn't aware of it either. I think we all were, but we didn't get into the mix enough. But when we had been out there in the past, we were told that it was going to go bank to bank. So I was a little disappointed about that. But anyhow, other than that, the project's moving right along. They're doing a good job, and they're directing traffic. And I'm glad I got home from the Bahamas in time to get my boat in the backyard because had I not, I would have not been able to get into my backyard and I would have had to park it somewhere else. So anyhow, that's it for me.
Thank you, Doug. Couple of quick thing. One, I think I'm going to turn it over to Andy's part of administrative comments when it's his turn, and just give us an update on Code Red. I think we've got some good news coming with regards to that program that we all supported. We wanted to get it up and, up and running. We wanted to get it up and, up and running.
I don't think it was Code Red.
Something related to that. It's a notification.
Different names, same company.
Right.
Rapid something.
No.
I'll cover, I'll cover.
What is it called? Red?
Rapid Notify.
Oh, okay. But when we initially had talked about it, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah, it's a different company, exactly. Okay. It was Code, Code Red or something Red, but it's a different company, it's Rapid. You're absolutely right, Keith. You're two for two. Three strikes, and I guess that I am out.
I'm back for business.
Yeah, it's nice to be, nice to be back. So anyway, you're gonna touch, touch on that, Andy, thank you. And the other thing that Andy and I have been in conversation the last couple of weeks, one of the things that we haven't got from our residents in quite some time is some feedback. So in consultation with Andy, and hopefully with your consent, we'd like to put together a survey with the mechanism as to how we're gonna promote it and get people respond. I think we're still working that part out, but it's been a long time since we have gotten actual feedback from a survey from our residents. And I'd certainly like to pursue this, either in the mail or some mechanism online, I'm not sure yet. And Andy has done this several times in the city of Tamarack. We've got a lot of experience in this, in this area. So with, with your consent, to continue to move forward with, with this, so that, again, you know, get feedback from our residents, how we're doing, and what they'd like to see, et cetera. You know what those surveys are, are all about. And I think it's about time that, that we did get, get that out there and get feedback from the residents. So with your consent, I'd like to, to continue on the path of-
I'm on board.
Bringing that to fruition. Okay. Freddie? Okay, great. And with that being said, again, thank you to council, allowing me some time with the family. July is, is my month, that three and a half, four-week period of time. We are back at school, and I can tell you, things are crazy and getting crazier. Not enough time, quite frankly, to talk about a lot of the things, but it's great to be back. Thank you all for taking such good care of me during my absence, and looking forward to getting through this budget process and, and moving, moving along. It's good to see everybody. Okay, that concludes council member comments. Keith, now that I'm 0 for 2, be careful what you say, because I'm gonna be listening intently if you have comments.
I, I will. Thank you, Mayor. I guess with, with that introduction, you know, I definitely want to congratulate my friends Will and Kate on the birth of their son, so I'll start off with that.
King George.
It, as it relates to something that Kathy said about liability in horses, I said it last time, I'm gonna say it again, absolutely, the Florida statute is clear, there's no liability for anyone horseback riding, because horses are considered to be a dangerous sport, and as such, you know, you're at your own peril when you ride a horse. But as Kathy also said, that doesn't stop anyone from not recognizing that law and suing us, and we're currently dealing with a lawsuit with the Warren family, whose horse tripped and fell, they broke their arm, the kid broke the arm, and they decided to sue us. And the property owner on house where the girl landed, we've told our insurance defense, because we don't handle this, it's the, the town's insurance defense, don't settle with them, there's no liability. And they look at us like we're crazy, because they're all about giving out the town's money and not worrying about it. So, but Kathy is correct, I don't even think you need to post the statute. The law is the law, people do it just so that everyone knows it. But it's not like the Bad Dog statute, that you have to post Bad Dog. This is absolutely clear in the law, so I will reiterate, for any homeowner or anyone else, if you ride your horse, you're at your own peril, and, and the law's clear on that. I don't know where the town council stands on the Resource Recovery Board issue, because I missed that, that one meeting in between where it was initially brought up. I assume everyone's familiar that the majority of the cities, 85% of the cities, have filed a lawsuit against Broward County. They're still waiting to determine the town's position on this. And I get a call probably once a week from, from the head group, including Mayor Ryan from Sunrise, et cetera, on this. And to refresh everyone's recollection, the county has hundreds of millions of dollars in assets that are required to be distributed to the municipalities that were part of the RRB. The county has created their own math, the municipalities have their own math, and they are separated by hundreds of millions of dollars. And as a result, 85% of the municipalities have joined in a massive litigation against the county to get their money back. There is a secondary issue that Marty and Andy have discovered, and that is, under our agreement with the RRB, the Resource Recovery Board, we are supposed to get our distribution of the net assets after, based on the latest numbers, which would have been the 2012 numbers. Because of creative math for several years, the numbers before 2011 were about 4,000, if I remember, 4,000 tons, something like that. And after 2011, we were at 8,000, okay? So we're double. Well, to tell you how much of a difference it is, had we been paid on the, the proper tonnage when we got our initial check from the county, it was about 150,000 plus or minus 100 and something thousand difference of what we're owed from what we're paid. So I called the, the council who's, who's leading it for the, the whole group, and I said, "Listen, you know, my council staff has not made a decision yet whether or not they're joining." And, and the reason I bring that up is because your percentage share of their litigation is our share of the, of, of our percentage distribution. And as a result of it, since 85% have already joined, we're like de minimis, because all the big players have already joined, Hollywood, Fort Lauderdale, et cetera. So, you know, i-if we have 2% of, you know, the, the total waste, it's less than that, Andy's saying that the, the dollar amount is de minimis. But I called them to let them know that we have a secondary issue, and our secondary issue is that we're not getting the proper amount. And, and after $100 million distribution, that amount is gonna be a sizable amount. I'm talking the half a million dollars potentially, depending on how much is distributed at the end. So, you know, at some point in the upcoming meetings, the council's gonna have to take a formal vote through a resolution as to whether or not it wants to join all the other cities in their litigation against the county. And, and then we have the secondary issue, which Andy's been working on, back and forth letters that have gone nowhere, as far as whether or not we're gonna get paid our proper share. And Andy can elaborate in a minute on that. Third issue that I want to bring up, Bob Hartman brought up about Holiday Park. I would urge everyone, knowing what I know about the relationship between the county and the town, that we don't change that name of that park until after the 18 million is spent. And I would highly recommend waiting on that for a lot of good reasons, you know, and, and you can talk to me later, and I'll let you know. A lot of people may have seen the, a major Court of Appeals decision relating to local government yesterday, and that is the Beth Talibisco case. And if anyone has not followed this, it was a truly amazing decision, which a judge dismissed a criminal trial against the mayor of Tamarack, saying that there was not probable cause for a trial. Meaning, the judge looked at the evidence and said, "Yeah, these people contributed to her campaign, but, you know, that's it. There's no other evidence that shows that, you know, she was corrupt by her voting, et cetera." And, and they properly dismissed the case. The Court of Appeals said, however, that they did believe that there were sufficient grounds to actually try Beth Talibisco. They don't think, they didn't really opine whether or not they think she'd be found guilty or innocent, and most people would think that she'd be found innocent, but they found grounds to try her. As a result of this decision, and it's a very lengthy Court of Appeals decision, I saw some emails today from city attorneys, and I'll forward to the council and anyone who wants it, that they've now told their, their commission, and that until this all pans out, that anyone who gives you a political donation, if they come before your council and ask for your support on an item, abstain and move away, because it's just not worth it. Okay? And that's how crazy this opinion's got, and it's like four pages of the opinion, 13 through 17. I'm gonna send you the opinion, you gotta read it and make your own determination if this ever comes up. Most of the time, it doesn't come up in this town, but I'm just wanting you to know what the big buzz is in the community now about that decision. And it really hasn't been reported that much in the, in the press at this point. Other than that, that is it. I'll turn it over to Andy, and he can fill you in on more of the stuff.
Thanks, Keith. That concludes item number seven, legal comments. Item number eight, administration comments. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome back. It's a pleasure to have you in the House again.
Nice to be back, Andy. Thank you.
Just to, I'll, I'll start off with jumping on Keith's comments on the Resource Recovery Board. When we originally received our numbers from Broward County, it was based on the 2012 tonnage, which is what we expected that distribution to be based on. That, subject to the, the consideration of the assets and what the assets are, but, but in, in the counties, I'll say, very conservative estimation of the assets, that distribution based on the 2012 numbers to us, would have been about $225,000. With the 2011 numbers, that 225,000 actually drops to 125. So we lose about $100,000 in, in the difference in the tonnage, that's really where those numbers are. We put the county on notice that we have a concern with that. While Keith was out of town, the assistant attorney, Michelle Klimko, sent, and I was out of town as well, Michelle Klimko sent a letter to the county attorney, I'm sorry, to the county administrator. We never heard back from her. I sent a follow-up email last week, we didn't hear from her. I just happened to be at a meeting last week where the county administrator was there, and I asked her if she'd received my email, and just wanted to get confirmation that she had received it. And she and her assistant assured me that their, the math that they had done was correct, that they were getting their paperwork together, and they would send that off to me. We're still waiting for that. There is a meeting next week over at the, the Emergency Operations Center, where the county invited not just the, the cities that are, that are in litigation, but, but those that aren't, just to have a seat at the table for that discussion, and we'll be there. I think Michelle will be with me as well, and I think Marty will go, so that we're, we're certainly well represented, and, you know, we'll certainly do whatever we need to do to, to protect our interests. Okay, moving on, on some other things. On bulk, it's wonderful to have a quiet bulk week. I think the weather cooperated. I assure you, we will continue to keep our eye on that. We, I like quiet bulk weeks, I don't like calls coming in, and, you know, we'll certainly do what we need to do to, to try to continue that. But as I said, cooperation from the weather helped, I know we had more trucks, and, you know, they, they proved that it can be done. Councilmember Fissa Kelly was talking about the Luke's contract, and there's, I'll say a flaw in how the notification and the billings have been done from Luke's. First of all, they're supposed to supply us with reports, or in advance of what, what the cuts will be, and, you know, what'll be done. We haven't received one of those in actually almost a year. So it, it puts December in a position where she's chasing them by phone to try to figure out where they are, what they've done, what they haven't done, and, and she's chasing them around town, trying to get an accurate inventory on, on what's been cut and what hasn't been cut. One of the other issues that, that's in there is there are zones. And what happened is if, if they start a zone, they do some work in that zone, even when it's not completed, they were billing us for that zone. So we've, we've identified that, we've got some issues, I, I've come up with some policies that we're putting in place. We actually had Luke in for a meeting this week. What I've requested from him is that, that no later than the end of day Friday, we get a complete written work plan of, of what's scheduled for the coming week. No later than the end of day Monday, we get a complete written summary of work that was performed the previous week. If zones have been begun but not completed, they should reflect the percentage that was been done. And final determination on those percentages will be up to the contract administrator. And then no later than five days following the end of the month, we get a summary, again, of what was cut during that month. There are just challenges in trying to manage this across town and keep up with what's done. And they just, they just, quite frankly, haven't been giving us the notice that they need to. And, and we're jumping on them, and we'll, we'll certainly do everything we can to get that cleaned up. IT and the voice over internet, we're currently in, in transition on that. The phone system is in, and is functional. You all now have actual phones on your desk. Some of you may realize, the council had phone numbers assigned to them before, but they didn't actually have phones. So if you called their number, you could only get a voicemail, you'd leave a message, and they had to call in and check that. Now they actually have real phones. So we, we made some progress on that, the, the phones are terrific. The, the IT services, I would say, were probably 90, 95%. And I'll say, the issues we have have been on the connections side. We haven't gotten everything from connections this week that we're supposed to get. So we're working on that now. Tamarack was here, I know Peter was here with them till almost midnight last Friday, they were here late on Saturday, they worked on it remotely on Sunday, and they've been here pretty much every night and, and during the day this week. So, you know, they're throwing the resources at it, but we can only, we can only convert some of the things that we get from, from connections, and as we get that, we'll, we'll continue with that. Website. The web, the website, and not having the, the agenda for this evening, I apologize for that. That was kind of the perfect storm. We've got, the new website is, is ready to go, and our, our company that did the design work had an issue with the company that was doing the hosting for them, and that delayed that. So we have the old website, which continues to still be in place. However, the IT conversion that we did shut down our access to that. We had an issue with that, where the software, we weren't able to communicate with the website, so we weren't able to get that information up. What we did was we took the agenda for this meeting, we sent it out to our blast email list, but I'm, I'm very, very comfortable that we're gonna have that, that corrected within, within the next day or so. So certainly won't be an issue with the agenda for the next commission, council meeting. The Rooster has been gone actually on the homepage for months. We didn't take it off, it died. The Rooster died, it was just a technology issue where he just fell off the perch, and we couldn't put him back up there. So that's unfortunate, but we're, you know, it has, has been gone for a period of time. I think you all know Carol Morris, who had been working with the South Florida Water Management District. Carol has, has moved on. Her replacement was actually her predecessor, a woman by the name of Laura Corey. Some of you may know or may have dealt with Laura. She'll actually be in next week for, for an introductory meeting with us, so certainly if there's any questions or any concerns you have for the South Florida Water Management District, certainly please let me know. The traffic light, the flashing light in front of Masters Academy has, was mentioned this evening, it's been mentioned repeatedly. I will assure you all, it's, it's not a speed trap. We've been working with BSO on that, it's actually been reported four different times, trying to get somebody to correct that, and, and we'll certainly continue to do that, and certainly until it's fixed. Ken Semeta and the Rural Public Art Board, with assistance from Susan Cuts and Willie Nabong, have been working on the entryway sign. They've made some real progress, and we're gonna have something to show you on that very, very shortly. But they're, they've been hard at work on that and doing a great job. The barn staff is, I've told you, we're working on that. Staff is currently drafting the, the proposal to, to send out and, and sharing that with the architect. So there, there is a, a rough draft form on that, it is taking shape, we are moving forward, and we're looking forward to getting that out, certainly as quickly as we can. And last but not least, I had added, Mayor, you had mentioned Code Red, which is Rapid, we actually collected prices on that, we got a, a much better price from Rapid Notify. Their software is, is very, very similar, a little bit easier from the operations end, from, from, you know, from in-house. And we are, I know Sandy's been hard at work at that, we're gonna be rolling that out very shortly, there'll be a lot of information in the next newsletter on that, we'll have it on the website, we'll have it in blast email, we're, we'll certainly do everything we can to promote that and get people signed up and, and onboard for that. And I think I covered everything I had to cover. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Andy. Keith insists, it's Rapid Notify. Okay. Next is items nine, 10, and 11, and for the purpose of efficiency, Andy and Keith concurred that we can do that, that they'll read them all into the record, and for the purpose of efficiency, we'll go back and take them one at a time, debate, and conclude by a vote. Again, it, the items, again, is setting the millage rate, the fire service assessment fee, and the rate for the solid waste services. So with that being said, I'll turn that over to Andy to get us started, I should say Erica first.
Oops, sorry.
And then over to Andy. We read them all for the record first, and I'll turn it over to you, Andy. Thank you.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, setting the proposed millage rate and current rollback rate pursuant to Section 200.065 Florida statutes, and establishing the date, time, and place at which public hearings will be held to consider the proposed millage rate and the tentative budget for fiscal year 2014, and directing the town clerk to file said resolution with the property appraiser of Broward County pursuant to the requirements of Florida statutes and the rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue for the state- of Revenue for the state of Florida. Directing that a certified copy of this resolution be sent to the Broward County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector and providing for an effective date. Item number 10, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the preliminary fire services assessment relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Providing purpose and definitions, providing for the imposition and computation of fire protection assessments, incorporating the fire protection assessment report, providing for legislative determination of special benefit and fair proportionment, establishing the rate of assessment, directing the preparation of a preliminary assessment rule, providing for disabled veterans exemption, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing an effective date. Item number 11, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, relating to the provision of solid waste services, facilities, and programs to residential properties in the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Providing authority for solid waste of service assessment, providing purpose and definitions, providing findings incorporating the solid waste special assessment methodology report, directing the preparation of an assessment rule, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing an effective date.
Thank you Erica. Andy?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. Despite the next three items on here, we have the preliminary millage, the fire assessment fee and the solid waste assessment. While it looks like a budget meeting tonight, it really isn't. This is a regular council meeting. This is for us to be legally compliant with our TRIM notice requirements. And what we're doing tonight is these actions, these three separate actions, will just establish the maximum rates for all of, all these items. I just want to point out that we do have a budget workshop scheduled for August 20th at 7:00 PM. That's a Tuesday night. And then we have the first public budget hearing on Thursday, September 12th at 6:00 PM. And the second hearing on Thursday, September 26th at 6:00 PM. So certainly the workshop and those other times are going to be the opportunity to really work on the budget. This is really not intended as a, as a budget workshop or discussion. Certainly we'll answer and address any questions that you all may have. But we certainly want to give you as much time as we can with the budget so that we come into that workshop where we're certainly all prepared and ready for that. And, you know, if it's okay with you Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Marty. He's got a brief PowerPoint presentation to share with you this evening.
Absolutely Andy, thank you. And Marty, great job putting this all together, making it understandable for anybody that takes the time to go through this and just very, very impressed. And thank you for doing such a great job. We know that you spent tremendous amount of time and effort to put this information together. Peter, I know that you certainly had a lot of influence into this as well and Andy's guidance, but job well done and thank you very, very much for this document. We appreciate it very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you Town Administrator Andy, and residents of the Town of Southwest Ranches. My name is, of course, for the record, Martin Sherwood, the Town Financial Administrator. I'm here tonight with Peter Brill, Town Controller, to ask any questions or assist if you have any. But as Andy has indicated, this objective tonight is millage maximums. I have a quick presentation, 14 PowerPoint slides to present a combined impact. And that involves the proposed millage hearing. This will be our three resolutions. That was read by Clerk Erica, number nine, 10, and 11. The initial fire assessment and the initial solid waste assessment. I'm trying to get the PowerPoint to cooperate. Let's see. Oh, by the way, I'd first like to comment to council that we are right on schedule in accordance with the approved budget calendar. I've put budget calendars back for distribution if anyone wanted to be reminded of our status right now. We're about midway. The July 25th prelim hearings are being held tonight. As Andy mentioned, we have the workshops. We encourage all residents to attend the workshops. This will be in accordance with the TRIM distribution letters that will go out during the month of August. And then our first rate setting is September and the second later in September. So I'd like to just report to you, the books have been distributed right on time. That's Friday, July 12th. It's also available on the website. We have books in Town Hall for anyone's use. I've been told there have been someone, people have come in to view the book that have been interested in it. We have some tonight if anyone would like to look at it. So I welcome you all that. And we've passed out the PowerPoint, a few of the handouts that I'm going to cover tonight, which will also be on the website as soon as we can get it on tomorrow. Okay? So first thing we're going to cover is the actual proposed millage hearing and the definition of ad valorem, property tax. It's Latin according to value. But the point is whose value? Is it market value? And market value, as you know, is what someone will pay. Assess value, the assessed value is what the tax appraiser believes is a fair value for the property. And finally, the taxable value. The taxable value is what the millage rate that we're imposing tonight can be multiplied by, which is actually your assessed minus your individual exemptions. Our next slide, we have our famous eagle. And you could see it's pretty much horizontal. Going for our historic and proposed millage rates for tonight, the proposed is 3.9404. Our next slide is basically a millage maximums and the related information. Along with the proposed 3.9404, you will see that the rollback rate, which is the top one, I know it's hard to read, but the top rollback rate is 3.8012. That would be the only way we would have considered the proposed rate to have no tax increase. As you could see, the 3.9404 is slightly above the 3.8012 and represents a, on a per 250,000 taxable value of $35 that we're proposing for the millage maxes tonight. Now this is in regards to our combined rate impacts. Maintaining the 3.9404 mills means slight property tax increases. As I mentioned, $35 per 250,000 in taxable values to no increases depending on an individual's exemptions for some residents. Coupled with the proposed fire and solid waste assessment rates, many residents will see an increase from the Town of Southwest Ranches of $34.03 annually or less than $2.84 annually. And the below line just gives you a breakdown, a combined. We have the $35 ad valorem, the $29.63 for the fire, less solid waste of $30.60 equals the $34.03 annually. And remember, this is all on per $250,000 of taxable value. Moving to the fire assessment, our fire assessment is permitted per Florida statutes, chapters 166.021 and 166.041, which provides for a fair and equitable contributions towards expenses for fire. The annual rate establishment is required by our Town Ordinance 2001-09 and tonight's initial resolution is needed to meet our TRIM truth and millage advertising requirements. Our fire assessment is unique. It's based on categories. There are proposed increases and that has been explained in your council communications due to contractual, Davy contractual commitments as well as our fire operational study forthcoming. These two, the top is our residential dwelling. The bottom is our vacant agricultural per acre proposal. The second is a breakdown of our other three categories, the commercial, industrial, and institutional. Per square footage, three-year history and proposed fiscal year 2004. I'm moving quickly through this because the next slide will actually give you, please change the slide, will give us the individual impacts, fire assessment impacts. Single-family residential, it's $29.63 increase per dwelling. Commercial, it's a six cent increase per square foot. Our industrial warehouse is 22 cents increase per square foot. Institutional, it's three cent increase per square foot. And vacant agricultural is $23.80 per acre. I have two illustrations basically with the discussions. And we're working similar to last year. And there's, if those of you can't read it, it says, "So it cost me $2.92 per month more in property taxes on my 250,000 taxable property and $2.40 per month more in my fire assessment." Well, where is that race offset you were talking about? The next screen says, "Again this year, it's all about the garbage," which is coming up next. Our solid waste garbage assessment permitted by Florida statutes, chapters 197.3632, the annual rate establishment required by Town Ordinance 2002-08. And again, the initial resolution needed tonight is to comply with our TRIM truth and millage requirements. I've highlighted in yellow over in the far right, basically the decreases in dollars based on lot square footage. Obviously, the smaller lot square footage, which is 0 to 41,200, that's slightly under than an acre, has a $32, $30.60 decrease per year. Down on the bottom, that are 107,000 or greater than 107,000 is $11.72 decrease. The decrease impact overall this year is a 5.5 percent, adding to an approximately 30 percent cost savings for residential collections across all residential categories last year. The residential solid waste reductions range from the $11.72 to $30.60 annually depending on the lot square footage. Our final slide is the conclusion. It basically, it is your Town Administrator and Town Financial Administrator's recommendation that the Town Council of Southwest Ranches adopt the resolutions presented tonight, setting the rate maximums, which primarily provide for an aggregate combined increase in the fiscal year 2003, excuse me, 2013, 2014, monthly costs of less than $2.84 or $34.03 annually to residential homeowners of 250,000 in taxable value with a lot square footage of less than or equal to 42, 41,200. Thank you.
Thank you Marty. Andy, any additional comments that you would like to make? I know that there was, with regards to the historical rate, I know that there was a lot of thought with regards to why you're proposing or recommending that rate, not the least of which I know were some of the other potential expected increases. One obviously concerned about is the contract that we're in the process of renegotiating for police services. And as a reminder, as I'm flipping through my mind too, and some of the things that I was thinking about as part of setting the millage rate, and I know and you and I have had a couple of conversations, and I know that the preliminary recommendation of the sheriff is about a million dollars more, but that includes additional staffing and stuff. When you and I had that conversation, you know, based upon these numbers, we wouldn't be in a position to be able to fund it quite frankly. But this fallback figure includes a provision in there that includes what is being proposed with maintaining the existing staff, is my understanding. And I just want to make it perfect, make it perfectly clear, but just get a confirmation or commitment from you that you feel comfortable with those numbers because quite frankly, I'm not so sure that I do. And, you know, the conversations that are going back and forth with regards to this, this contract. Because once we set it tonight, you can't go higher, you can only go lower. And I suspect that there's a potential for that to happen. But, you know, that's a pretty significant variable and a significant, you know, amount between what you budgeted for and what they are proposing. And I just want to make sure that you feel comfortable because all the other variables and the things that are part of your budget, honestly, I don't see any potentially significant adverse impact with the exception of this, this contract because there is such a differential between the initial proposal and where we are.
Actually Mayor, you actually summed it up quite well. Recognizing the financial challenges we have ahead of us, the key, you know, certainly the largest, one of our largest expenses is renegotiating that BSO contract. And there are really two components to that. One is just the price for what we've got now versus additional cost for additional staffing. So we're working on that. There was certainly a lot of thought went into that millage rate on, you know, what we're going to put into the budget that we brought to you. I mean, at this point, we were certainly comfortable bringing you this. This is actually the first public meeting with anything to do with budget. But this is something that staff has been certainly hard at work on for several, several months. We've worked very hard to get to this point. But this really, tonight just begins the, I'll say opening season on, on the public aspect of budgeting. So as, as we're doing this, we're putting a budget in place. We've got a discussion, as I said, before the workshop at the end of August. We've got two public hearings on, on the budget in September before it's finally adopted, becomes effective October 1st. The BSO contract that we're talking about is really on parallel tracks. We're negotiating that. That expires September 30th. We're looking at that same October 30th. So we're asking you for this millage rate. And I'd be uncomfortable going lower at this point. It doesn't mean that we may not necessarily be able to get there through this process because I do have some concerns on that, on the BSO contract aspect. Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to set the millage rate at 3.9404. Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve. One quick question, just to confirm also in the conversations that we have had, Andy. With regard to this BSO contract, approximately $2.2 million is included approximately in this budget to satisfy this new contract with BSO.
Yes Mayor.
And you're comfortable with that?
Broward Sheriff's Office, the Budget Office, the Broward Sheriff's Office had sent us a letter at this point now, several weeks ago, which outlined what the cost would be for our current staffing level. So this budget was built around that information supplied by them. Certainly not based on the current year, but based on where they anticipate that cost going.
And you feel comfortable with that? I just want to, I want to make sure because again, I saw what they had proposed. I know at 3.2 million, again, we can't go up, but I just want to throw it out there to you. And that was my concern. to you, and that was my concern, and we've had a couple of conversations.
We all have our wish lists there.
I mean, the costs are what the costs are, and health, safety, and welfare of residents is a priority. There isn't any compromising that, that's for sure. Okay. Motion and a second to approve your recommendation, the historical rate of 3.9404. Opening up for public comment.
Just a couple of things, I just cannot fathom how they're being calculated. I don't understand why, if I've got one of the larger properties in town, and I'm only over it by 10,000 square feet, why I would be, my taxes, my garbage fee would be going down less. It seems to me that if I'm paying more, and you've got a distribution there on a percentage basis, if it's gone down, that ought to be equitably distributed based on what you pay. I just can't understand how I would be getting an $11 reduction for my size property, and somebody who's got a little piece of property gets a $30 reduction. I just, I haven't figured out those numbers yet. That's number one. Number two, we have a lot of institutional properties in town, I believe. Are all the churches covered, and all the religious institutions and schools covered under institutional property?
Yes, that is correct.
I'm not understanding why they're not going up proportionately where the residents are going up. I think that all those curves ought to follow the same direction. All ought to take a similar hit, not all the residents. Take the burden for the institutions around town, as well as the commercial properties. I think it's not a secret that the commercial properties use those resources, fire and rescue, far more than the residents do. So again, I don't understand the math behind that piece.
Bob, just as a reminder, we're talking about the milage rate, and I want to hear everything that you have to say.
What I'm talking about. Well, are we only talking milage rate?
Yeah, just milage rate right now. Fire assessment is the next resolution, and after that is the.
Final comment then, directly at the milage rate. This is kind of a one-sided deal. This is like me going into a used car lot, and I say I want to spend 500 bucks, and the guy takes out his order pad and starts writing up without me ever seeing the car. Where are you spending the additional revenue that's coming in on this? I'm hearing only $2.94 a month for the first 700, 250,000, and X number after that, depending on the value of my property. I don't know how you're spending that. It doesn't look reasonable to me that you're talking about raising taxes with, and I understand the whole process, without showing us how much additional revenue that represents to the town. I think that's one side.
I think it's approximately $40,000 from last year. Is that right, Andy, if I read it right, the historical rate and what it was last year, approximately 38,000 something?
Actually, Marty, do you know the exact number?
The slide that's on the screen now basically would detail your increase from the rollback, which you would see, the 3.8012, that would display 148,360 in total. I need to mention that in the book, it pretty much details the proposed book, multiple areas, contractual increases, transfers to capital projects, much-needed capital projects, including the forthcoming drainage expectations, drainage and capital projects. So it's a multiple ride range of sources, which includes contractual increases, BSO increases. A portion is fire, because I need to remind the residents, I know we're not on fire yet, but the contractual increase for the Davie fire is spread between EMS and fire protection. So there's a lot of individual items that go into that 148,000.
And again, the difference, that 3.8012, with the rollback rate essentially would rollback the rate, essentially eliminating the increased value of the property to ensure that they paid the same amount as last year. And then the 3.9042 is the rate that was established for last year. But as a result of the property value increases, you know, everybody's, you know, looking at that 148,360 to 38 to what, you know, Andy's proposing, and I certainly understand that, but I just wanted to throw it out there. And I know everybody probably knew this already, but what those three different milage rates are and what they, and what they mean. Any other public comment about the milage rate? Okay, see, no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. We have a motion and a second to approve, unless we have some additional questions, comments, or concerns, and I know Gary does.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make an additional comment. We're setting the limit, high limit on this. In discussions with Andy and Marty on this, I asked them just to think about this right now. This is not something we decide tonight, but I just want to, want you guys to think about it. I asked them to calculate what the difference was for a flat 39000. That's not on that chart. I have it here. It was just prepared for me. You'd be looking at a deficit on the proposed budget, proposed, of $43,000, which I feel could be easily covered by the surplus that we're going to run this year from the resource recovery, from the other items that have come our way this year. That's something for further discussion. The budget has several workshops. Not all of it may survive, so the numbers are going to probably be changing all over the place, but I'd like everybody to consider going in the future to a flat 390. I think we can cover the ground, even if the budget survives as it is right now, we could cover that without seriously damaging services or things here at Town Hall. So I just want to throw that out there for everybody to consider that. I've gone through the budget with a fine tooth comb, and I'm probably going to do it again, and we're going to see, you know, Andy and Marty have done an outstanding job with it. It's easy to read. I don't know how many of you have gone through it. You can take it line item by line item. It's well thought out, well put together, a lot of questions. If anybody has any, please, you know, call Andy, call us, you know, what have you. And I know I'm talking to Andy and Marty on an every-other-day basis, based on that. So, but I just want to mention that I'm more moving in the line, although we're voting for the maximum limit right now. What happens by September, October could be a whole nother story. So I just want to point that out to everybody, and this is, this is where we're at with that. So having said that, move on.
Agreed. Good, good information, Gary. Thank you. Freddie?
Yeah, Andy, you seem to be, one of the things that's causing this is the BSO contract. What happened to the Davie contract? You know, we had talked about Davie before. I'm not upset with BSO. The only thing I'm figuring is BSO says they need more people. And to me, you know, we have the same thing with the police that we do with fire. We actually got probably more residents in our town that live in Davie than we have in our own people. So they must have a lot of cars here already. If we need more cars, it may be our advantage to go to Davie, because they're here already. You know, I know BSO says they're having problems giving us what we need, because they need more people, and am I right? So that, I mean, I know BSO's not going to be happy with me, but my job is to try to find the best thing for our town, and it's just like fire department. We benefit a lot by having the Davie Fire Department right in our town, and we've already got the Police Department here too. So to me, I, all of a sudden, we were talking to them, I don't hear no more talk.
Andy?
Just in answer to that, council member, I'll just say that the budget process is one that's very fluid at this point, and we're looking at all our options.
Mayor, if I may?
Absolutely.
Gentlemen, we're just setting the milage. We have a lot of other meetings coming up to address all this stuff we're talking about, so why we're wasting time on it is beyond me. Thank you.
August 20th, August 20th, Budget Workshop. We want everybody to be here, absolutely. Any other council member comments? Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve. The town administrator's recommendation of milage rate of three, the historical rate of 3.9404. Erica, call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. Okay, item number 10, that's already been read for the record. Do you want to touch on this one, Andy, or Marty?
I have nothing further to add at this point, Mayor.
Okay.
Nothing from me, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again, this is the fire assessment fee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this side? Noel.
Would you put this one up? Okay, take a look at this panel. 2011, the industrial warehouse and the homeowner were the same. We have been subsidizing industrial all this time, for the last three years. Take a look at 2013 to 2014. The amount of the curve on the homeowner versus the amount of the curve on the industrial and the institutional. Again, we're doing additional subsidy to these two groups, and it's right there on the chart. We're doing a subsidy of another 22 cents per square foot for the homeowner. If you put 22 cents on the industrial and 22 cents on the institutional, that's fine with me. Then we're right. Everyone's suffering the same. But don't have the homeowner subsidize the businesses and the churches. Don't. It's right there on the graph. You can't dance around it. You've got additional 22 cents per square foot that I am going to have to subsidize the commercial and the institutionals. That is not right, especially when three years ago, the commercial and the homeowner were paying the same rate. Not fair, not correct. Get it right, and stop dancing.
Any other members of the public wish to comment? See, no more public comment. Public comment is now closed. I'm a little bit confused about that, that assessment or that statement. I know that what's up there is the commercial, industrial, and institutional in the per square foot by category. With regards to the residential, we're being assessed one, one fee. So I'm not sure, I'm confused, Noel, about how you're comparing what residents pay and what the three categories, the three other categories are, and then adding the 22 cents. I don't understand the logic.
Mayor, that's not my chart. That is his chart.
No, I understand that.
So there is where your question goes, not to me. I'm analyzing it.
But the three categories that just came up there, that has nothing to do with residential. That's the other categories that are assessed by square foot. So I'm not understanding, I'm not understanding the logic or the recommendation. That's, I don't understand what you're, with regards to what you pay as a resident.
And I am residential.
No, I understand that, but that's not what we were just looking at. Residential is, you know, one, one certain amount, one.
That chart says residential is 154 square foot, therefore, it has to be an average.
No, I don't think.
Mr. Mayor, can I inject?
Yeah, go ahead, Marty.
The categories are basically, have been developed from the extensive study, the fire assessment study that was done a few years back. And it's not, you're not able to do a direct apples-to-apples when you compare a dwelling unit versus a square footage versus an acreage. A lot go into the assessment methodology, which includes also the amount of fire protection responses, of who is generating the call volume. And obviously, residential plays a significant factor into the call volumes. So unfortunately, you are not able to do direct, they're either percentage increases or, in this case, dollar increases.
Mr. Mayor, have a record.
No, go ahead, Bob.
Bob Hartman, 5441, Southwest 198 Terrace.
Can't hear you in the mic there, Bob, sorry.
With all of these different types of fee structures, based on different attributes of the property, I only know of one way to compare year-over-year, and that's the percentage increase. If the apples went up so much, and the bananas went up so much, and the prunes went up so much, the difference year-over-year is the percentage. And if, if everybody went up 20%, I would consider it fair, but there's no way to determine whether one group has been favored over the other. These graphs almost imply that the residents are taking it on the chin, and the others are getting it subsidized. So I would request that it's, there's a percentage year-over-year, so then you'll answer a lot of questions.
We could do that, but unfortunately, what happens is it's a rolling target, because every year, you have a change in category square footage. Commercials' square footage could increase, institutionals could decrease, there's also a change. So there's not a consistency.
Increase that unit cost and increase that unit cost?
There, in terms of year-to-year, it's impossible, because you have different categories, and it's based on the assessment methodology. I could give you percentage increases by category. No problem with that. I'll be happy to give that to you tomorrow, but you are going to see different percentages throughout the categories, because you have changes in the denominator in terms of the amount of acreage, the amount of square footage per categories. There could be an add of square footage within institutionals. There could, so you have.
Sure, but last year, when taxes were charged, there was a finite number of square feet you were charging, I'm not talking about the amount of revenue it brings in. If we looked at institutional last year, it was 10 cents a square foot. When taxes were billed, everybody, when the TRIM notices went out, and this year they're 12 cents a square foot, that's what? That's a 20% increase, right?
Yes, I could give you that, however, we have to factor in the change of the, of the volume, you know, in terms of.
Okay, okay. You think you know it on a cost basis, not a revenue basis?
Can I speak again? Absolutely, Noel. Okay. What we have here, would you put that graph back up? I want to understand, Noel, where you're going or where you are with this. Okay, the.
The first one is the residential and the vacant agricultural, and this is, the residential is dwelling unit, the bottom one is based on per acre. The second slide is the other three categories, which are.
Commercial, industrial.
Square footage, right.
Square footage. So I, what I don't understand, Noel, you were putting it as part of the equation, that the square footage and how it related to the residential assessment, that's what I didn't, that's what I didn't understand.
How he puts it together is his determination. I'm assessing the chart.
I don't understand that, but what I'm trying to.
And that's all.
How does it compare with the residential, the flat rate and the square footage? What, that's what I didn't understand.
You take the number of square footage of all the residential in town, and you find a number, and that is what the number is going to cost all of us, and that's exactly what the per average cost is per house.
Where is that, though? I don't, what's that number? I don't know what that number is.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I don't either. I know what the bottom nine is going to be. The couple of hundred dollars I'm going to have to pay in fire fee, but if I.
About $30 more. It's about $30 more, you're right, from last year.
So what I'm saying is that if the graph is that way for residential, the graph for commercial and institutional should also have the same degree of angle. That's all I'm saying.
What you're asking is what the square-
Why are we-
Yeah, I understand. Based upon the four, the assessment, what are we paying as a square?
Why are we subsidizing the other two angles?
I hear what you're saying. I don't know if we are or not, but I understand what you're saying. You want to find out what the square footage cost is based upon what the residential assessment-
It says right there.
No, it doesn't say that right there.
Yeah, it says 150-
It says 160.
A dollar fifty-four for industrial per square foot?
This is a discussion for the next meetings, not now.
No, you're setting it now.
This can be changed and adjusted. It's just a set at the bar. This can be adjusted. This is just setting it right now.
That's right. You cannot go any higher than these.
You're right.
So industrial and institutional are fixed at that max rate tonight.
So tell us a higher number you want. We can raise it to whatever we want.
22 cents each.
So I'll change my motion.
That's what-
We can lower it later.
That's what residential is.
It's 22 cents a square foot?
Between this year and next year.
I, see, somebody, Marty, somebody show me where there is anything in any part of this presentation that tells us, based upon what the fire assessment fee is for residential property, how much residents pay per square foot? Is there, did I see, did I miss something?
Mr. Mayor, the single-family residential, in accordance with the study, is strictly based on dwelling unit.
I understand that. But what Noel is saying is that, and I don't know where he's getting it from, that's what's confusing me, that there is, that there is a square foot cost based upon all the homes in the town of Southwest Ranches, all the square foot divided by the amount that we pay, what the assessment is, that that should be a number. And I don't, that number's, it's not there.
It is not there. I have to indicate-
That's where I'm having a difficult time with Noel's analysis.
You are correct.
Okay.
Okay, so my question, Mayor, if I may?
Sure, absolutely.
My question, Marty, is this. Based on what Noel's talking about, for us to move on to deal with this in the next meeting related to this, what number do I need to approve tonight so I can change in case I need to go up? What's the highest number that we need to set tonight? Because we can always reduce it later, but we can't go up. So what is a safe window related to this discussion that we can set this rate at to move on?
If the objective is to meet the study, the approved study, it's the rates we're proposing tonight. I do not recommend any deviation from the rates I'm proposing tonight because the factor, which I'll be happy to explain to Mr. Noel, also involves response time. And the response time and the percentages are extremely different between residential and industrial warehouse and institutional. So there's a lot of factors in the study.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying. We're getting confused here. And I hear what Noel is saying. He's trying to figure out, and I don't know if it's even possible. I guess it would be if you go to every house and how many square foot each house is and the total amount of money that's collected.
We did that last time. We set the millage, we had a study done based on square footage of houses. We set that, we set that number. You all got 20 or 30 phone calls and flipped out because people's fire assessancy went to $2,000 or $3,000, and you all cowed down to all the phone calls and everybody yelling. And I said, no, we need to stick to square footage based on what we had the study done. And you all chose not to do that and went back to the old rate. So that's what that's all about.
No, I remember that. Just a second, Keith, you're absolutely right. And people, there was, the one assessment fits all. There were people that, based upon the size of the home and square footage, and you're absolutely right, those were things that were part of the discussion, but you're absolutely right. I had people that were calling me that were going from 472, they were now paying 3, 4, 5, $6,000 for the fire assessment fee. And I don't know if that's fair. You know, does it require more units to respond?
That discussion is over, right?
I'm sorry?
That discussion is over.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but the problem was, that's what we paid to have the study done on, and that's the fact, is the information we got.
Doug? No, I'm sorry. Keith?
What I want to tell you is, you don't have a choice here. What Councilmember McKay's complaining about, what Noel Hollingsworth is complaining about, is a methodology that you all changed three times. Remember, that's how we ended up having to send out our own bill that year. You know, everyone remembers this. And so now they're still complaining about their fault of the methodology. By law, Marty is required to follow the methodology that the council approved. If you now have an issue with the methodology, you're going to have to go out and do another study, you know, to specifically show why you're going to change the methodology. But if not, you can't change your methodology at a whim. You know, and that's essentially what's going on here now, is that the residents and Councilmember McKay are complaining about, the same thing they've been complaining about for two years now, maybe even longer, that they have a flaw with the methodology, that they disagree with the council's determination on the methodology. But as far as for the rate, Marty can't change that, I can't change that, you can't change that. You're following the law as to what you all said is your methodology.
And I'm not talking about the methodology, any of that stuff. I'm trying to follow Noel's logic, and he was extrapolating or included as part of this graph that there is an assignment of residential property square foot, and I don't know-
Noel is making a compelling argument that the methodology is flawed.
I'm just trying to understand it.
Right, but I'm saying, he's saying that it's disproportionate increase in dollars, the way that he's factoring it, but that's how your methodology requires it. So if you all decide next year, the year after, to redo the study and pick a new methodology, you absolutely can do that. It's not the night to do that. But right now, I'm telling you legally, you have to follow the methodology that you have in place, and that's your only choice.
It's public comment, Bob.
Yeah, I, I'm not arguing the methodology. I lost that battle two years ago, okay? But if you wouldn't mind, Marty, go to the slide that shows the graph for residential dwelling and the vacant slash agricultural. I think it's a slide or two after this. There you, is that it?
Nope.
There it is. That's it, that's it, right there. Now, the reason I'm saying percentages, and I think it's just a misunderstanding between Marty and I in how you'd go about doing it, but I just did it on my calculator. The increase between last year and this year for residential is 6%. I mean, when you look at it as 6%, not a big deal. Now, I'm not sure if these graphs are to scale, because look at the one below it. That shows a slight increase, graphically speaking, but look at the numbers.
51 to 75.
That's 50%, isn't it? I mean, I might be doing the numbers wrong in my head, but-
About 30.
30%. Okay, thank you. The point is that if we're looking at year-over-year, these lines don't, they're not working, right? 30% ought to be a heck of a slope compared to that one. So I'd recommend something be put together that you could really just compare them year-over-year at what we charged last year, what you intend on charging this year. It'd make a lot more sense. I won't be arguing with you.
But then we need the study to support it.
Yep. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a, there's a little bit of apples and oranges going on here. The residential dwelling units, that's a per-unit, that's 6.7%. That's, I'm just doing the simple math here, an increase. The commercial goes by square footage. I mean, you could have a 10,000-square-foot building, and you're going to be assessed 7.7% more. The institutional warehouse, same thing. That's now 16% more. The vacant agriculture is now 15% more. And we're not comparing apples and, you know, apples-to-apples here at all. This is the methodology we picked, that we, you know, did the study on in order for us to change this. We've got to do some, I don't think we can do it legally, you know, as far as that goes. Maybe that's something we want to consider for next year or something to that effect. But going by what Bob just said with the percentages, the lowest category percent increase is the residential.
Yeah.
You know, just FYI, I mean, that's just doing the simple math.
That's a good point, Gary. Thank you.
I just want to ask something on the acreage. What were we paying on the acreage before?
The acreage it shows on the graph is 50.
Looking at the, looking at the graph, 5153, it looks like. 5153.
That is correct.
$51?
And 53 cents.
An acre.
Yes, ma'am.
We were paying.
You were, vacant agricultural per acre cost, that's correct. That's what the graph says.
So it's going to go down?
Nope.
Or it's going to go up another $23?
It's going to, 20, that's correct.
Per acre.
Per acre.
Is that vacant acreage or residential acreage?
It says vacant agricultural.
Yeah, well, I have agricultural land, and first of all, I doubt seriously I'm going to have a fire on it, and if I do, I'll put it out myself. But I'll be damned if I want-
It's not an option, sorry.
I'll be damned if I want to pay that much money for fire on a vacant piece of property or on agricultural property. That's crazy.
Any other public comment? We'll have, okay. Public comment is now closed. We have a motion and a second.
Thought you withdrew it.
No, I didn't withdraw it. I asked if you wanted, came up with an other, then I would.
He's not able to, not able to do that.
Can't do that.
You'd have to do another study and everything else. So we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of the town administrator, and I believe it's, well, you solved those figures instead of going through them all again. Well, let's go through them, let's real quickly, just go through the different categories, just so it's on the record, Andy.
Sure, Mayor.
I know it's 47214 for residential.
Yes, Mayor, 47214.
Which is an increase of $29.63. Commercial, 6 cents per square foot increase, but what was it prior?
Commercial's going from 78 cents to 84 cents per square foot.
Industrial warehouse?
From $132 to $154.
Hey, will you go back there where we just were? Go back? Just want to go through the categories for the record. Okay. Institutional?
That'll change from 20 cents to 23 cents.
And then vacant agricultural?
From 5153 to 7533.
Okay, now we have it on the record. Thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding this item? We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of town administrator. Call the question, please, Erica.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I failed to mention the fact of the exemption that we are also offering to the-
Veterans.
Veterans exemptions. And I'd like to include, if necessary, I defer to legal, how we're going to handle the treatment. That goes all together with the resolution tonight, or do we need to have a?
It's in there.
It's in the resolution.
100% of veterans, yeah.
Yeah, it's in there.
100%.
Okay. Call the question, please, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Physicelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 11, this is a rate for solid waste services, and there is a proposal for a reduction. So hopefully, not a lot of discussion on this item. And again, August 20th is our Budget Workshop, and we want everybody to come and attend and give us your feedback. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is now closed. Any questions, comments, or concerns from this council?
Yeah.
All right, we got a motion, and it's, it's easy when you're proposing reductions, that's for sure. We got a motion and a second to approve. Call the question, please, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Physicelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 12, approval of minutes for the July 11, 2013 regular council meeting.
Gary, second, I made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You got a motion and a second to approve? Call the question, please, Erica. I'm sorry. Anybody have any issues with that meeting or the information? Okay. Call the question. Sorry, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Physicelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, that concludes the agenda.